Today is Tuesday, May 6th. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Trustee McDonough.
Present.
Trustee Maribel.
Present.
Sorry, please note, trustee Mitchell will be joining us via video conference this evening.
Present.
Great. Trustee Njenga. Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Kerwin.
Here.
VP Kelly. President Saunders. We have our quorum. Stud-- oh, sorry. Yeah. And trustee Middleton, I have you check. Trustee Middleton, you're here. Okay. Student trustee De Grandpree.
Here.
Okay, great. We have our quorum. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the Board policy. Please state your name, address, and organization, if any you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, Board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remark. Our first speaker this evening is Linda Castro.
Thank you.
Can you please put the timer on?
My name is Linda Castro.
One moment, Ms. Castro.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, you could start.
My name is Linda Castro. I live at 1 Park Lane here in Mount Vernon, and I represent no one but myself and the children. Before I'm anything else, I'm a mother. I feel about the children I've known at Honor Academy the way I feel about my own. I want to protect them and nurture them, to help them in whatever way I can to achieve their potential, and believe me when I tell you, they have great potential. I want them to know that they have within themselves the ability to succeed, to know that they are good and that they are loved just the way they are, and they're loved even when they make a mistake. I would be there now if it weren't so difficult to watch the way they're treated and be unable to do anything to change it. As an educator, I would never say or do anything to another child that I wouldn't say or do to my own. Educating children is more than teaching three Rs. True education involves helping the whole child intellectually, socially, and emotionally to recognize their worth and to master their ability to successfully navigate life. Successfully navigating life involves respectful interactions with others. Children only learn respect when respect is shown to them and modeled for them by the adults around them. I want to thank this Board for taking the time to listen to my concerns about the lack of respect shown to our children and for taking my concerns seriously. I understand that efforts will be made to provide training for lunchroom staff regarding their interactions with our children. Although the district is in financial distress at this time, I would urge you, please, allocate funds for in-person as opposed to online training lunchroom personnel. Monitors and servers in training need to be able to ask specific questions about specific situations and learn how to appropriately handle those situations. They need at least a cursory understanding of child development in order to appreciate why we don't scream and constantly punish, that harsh punishment leads to a lack of self-esteem, and that a lack of self-esteem prevents children from achieving their potential. Please, I beg you, please demand that our children be treated, as Dr. Karen Dunkley encourages, with respect, compassion, and a firm belief in their ability to succeed. As I've said before, and I will say again, our children deserve nothing less than the very best that we have.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. May I respond to Ms. Castro very quickly? Ms. Castro, I know you-- I don't know if you can see me on TV screen because they got the timer up, but this is trustee Mitch. I did go to the building that you are referring to. I have spoken to the principal there, and thank you for what you brought to the conversation. It's been taken very seriously, and I know that there's been a conversation already about just what you just said, training and things like that, and the importance thereof. Thank you again for your efforts and for playing a part in our school district, as I know you were also one of the lunch monitors. You did your part, and I thank you very much. Thank you for bringing this to our attention as well.
Thank you, trustee Mitchell. Erica Peterson?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erica Peterson, and I'm a resident here in Mount Vernon, New York. I would like to speak tonight on allegations of child sexual abuse that the husband of Board President Adrian Saunders, named Gregory Bonaparte, announced that they had knowledge of on April 28, 2025. They have proclaimed to have alleged knowledge of ongoing child sexual abuse happening here in this district to an eighth-grade female student, but instead of reporting it to law enforcement or to the acting superintendent, they have decided to go on social media and also send out blast emails to members of this community bragging about allegedly having knowledge of this. Instead of reporting these claims of alleged sexual abuse happening to our children in this district to law enforcement, it was stated by the Board president's husband that he would place a bet of contributing $100,000 to an organization if these allegations were proven. As a mother of children in this school district and for other mothers and fathers of our children, I am absolutely sickened to learn of adults who claim to know of sexual abuse to children but yet not report it to the proper authorities. Behavior like that by trustee Saunders and her husband is what in criminal law is called being complicit, and if having knowledge of alleged child sexual abuse and not reporting it to the proper authorities but instead blasting it across social media is a campaign-election strategy that trustee Saunders and trustee Kerwin are running, then they have absolutely no business being near or around any of our children in this school district. Our children will not be a part of their vile and desperate campaign.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Melville Campbell.
Board trustees, members of the community, my colleagues, good evening. Tonight, just have one statement, one question. I'm gonna start with the question. Is there any good news? It seems the last four to six months, we've been stuck in a negative news cycle of closing schools, of a couple hundred people losing their jobs or being laid off, of major things like just community outrage, and what that does to the psychology of the staff members like myself that still work here and/or anybody looking to work here. I don't know. Is there any good news? We're looking very dark. And on that topic of bad news, one of the units that I'm close with and work with, the TA unit, Teachers Assistant, Teaching Assistant Unit, got some other news, that some of the people that are being laid off are going to be replaced by teachers aides. So the question is, why would that happen? And I know I'm looking, when I look at the Board and the makeup of the Board, I know I see people who are well entrenched in special education as far as being directors, administrators, and/or principals, or might just be involved in the community. We have a very large community of unique learners, and if you do your comparison or your budget analysis with the salary of a TA or an aide, you're probably gonna find that the figures for starting are somewhat similar. So I don't know why our district would turn the clock back on the teaching assistants who are partners in educating, who fight the battles along with the special education teachers, who when the kids get upset and need a moment, we're right there for them. When they kick, scream, and bite and fight, we're right there for them. When the teacher is absent, we fill in as a substitute. We're right there for them. And I know just about everybody will probably agree in silence, but it has to be pushed Silence becomes betrayal. That's a quote by Martin Luther King. We cannot turn the clock back, and even if we save a few pennies, because that's all you would save, and put our unique learning community at risk. I don't know if the parents [bleep] know about this possibility, but they should be informed, and let's not act like this is not happening because it's already showing up in the paperwork. So it's not like it's, we're gonna wait and see. It's already happening. I'm sure several people might know. But I would ask if my word or my desire to make you guys make a U-turn on that, I would just ask you to consider it, to have a conscience of it, because what you might save in a few pennies, you're gonna lose in quality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pat. Pat Rosamunda.
Good evening, Board trustees. My name is Pat Rosamunda. I live at 215 Hillcrest Road in Mount Vernon. I'm also the civil service administrator for the city of Mount Vernon. I'm joined here this evening with Commission President Joan Battle. I'm here to address the issue of the layoffs. There are lots of rumors swirling around, and we felt it was extremely important to address you personally this evening to provide clarification regarding the status of the school layoffs. In January 2025, the district announced the closing of three schools. I'm not sure of the timeframe that the discussion or the decisions for layoffs started to take place. Civil service was never included in any of these discussions. We found out quite by accident through phone calls from employees and outside individuals that were aware of what was going on. At the same time, the CSEA union representatives were included in this discussion and became extremely belligerent to myself and another school employee, so much so that the head of CSEA up in Albany, New York called me and said that if we didn't back off, that we were interfering and causing a lot of confusion within the district regarding the layoffs. So I went home, and I said to myself, how am I gonna prove this information to be correct? We put our heads together in the office. I did my research. I went to New York State Civil Service, and I also addressed my civil service law book. Civil service should have been the first and foremost entity to be included in school layoffs, and I do have a handout for all of the Board trustees to read and to see that it is written law. Okay? So upon that, we decided to call a meeting together. I became aware of the layoffs sometime in the middle of April, on the 17th. I was sent a list from the HR department that contained what they had determined to be the proper layoff, the names, the positions, and things of that nature. So again, the belligerent calls from the CSEA union continued. On April 24th, civil service called a joint meeting with the reps, from the HR department, the CSEA union reps, Dr. Smith, and your counsel, Mr. Royce. I just need another minute. At this meeting, we provided all the attendees in writing the civil service law regarding layoffs. The CSEA union reps were silenced and proven incorrect as to their input and their advice to the school district. Now the list of your employees that are being affected by the layoff is in the civil service office for review of accuracy. We received this information late, and we are not going to be pressured into providing a list of individuals to be laid off prior to us doing our due diligence. And most of all, we are asking for your patience to allow us to do our job. We have experienced a lot of disdain the past few weeks, and we will not take the blame for this faux pas. Thank you.
Thank you. Ariana Agalar?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ariana Agalar, and I am a parent of two scholars at Mount Vernon Honor Academy. I want to speak to you about concerns that parents from schools that are closing have regarding not knowing what schools our children will be assigned to for next year. It is the first week of May, and prior to the news story that came out last week from News 12, we had not received an update about when families will know. In that news story, it was mentioned that families would know by the second week of June. I wish this update would have been given by the district rather than a story on News 12, because I am sure that many families, including families that don't subscribe to cable or are not English-speaking, have not received this update, which also includes information that non-English speakers are not receiving about the budget presentations that are currently happening and have not received in town halls and other meetings this school year, even though it had been mentioned that, you know, outreach to the non-English-speaking community would happen, and it has not. I am also concerned that this timeframe will not give families enough time to address issues that they may have with the placement, which can include location or if families can't have siblings split up. From the last time I inquired, staff retained by the district also did not know their placements in teaching for next year. The timeline of when families might be notified highlights concerns regarding this reorganization being rushed and not having followed a phased approach of gradually closing schools rather than all at once. Families would also like an update and to be kept in the loop regarding the search and hiring of the new superintendent. Families would also like an opportunity to have an open house or to visit the school prior to the first day of school in order to help with the emotional impact that these closures will have for our children and to minimize a chaotic start to the new school year and to familiarize our children with their new schools. I want to thank Principal Marrow, all staff, and all teachers for keeping their efforts and for keeping things business as usual despite the circumstances that they've been dealing with. The families and staff at Mount Vernon Honor Academy are heartbroken about the school closing, especially given that it is a building in good condition and good academic standing. It is a loss and a disservice to the students of our district for the space to not be used in the future for them. We really need as much support as possible during this transition, and timely updates and communication from the school district is going to be crucial. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Latoya Anderson?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Latoya Anderson, and tonight I'm here on behalf of the Mount Vernon PTA Council. We have also our PTA Council President Michelle Rale with us. I know a gentleman just asked about good news, and I just want to break it to you guys. Thank you, teachers and staff of Mount Vernon City School District for supporting the Edith Kaplan Scholarship Dinner Dance on April 25th. We had over 450 attendees, and we were able to raise $30,000, which will go-- So there is one good news. Sorry. Which will indeed go towards our scholarship fund of assisting high school seniors and also eighth-grade seniors. So thank you for mentioning it several times in your superintendent report, acting superintendent. And I just wish that I had seen more Board trustees supporting us, but next year for sure. I also furthermore, I just want to take this opportunity to clarify the PTA's position regarding the upcoming school board election. PTA is a non-for-profit organization. We are nonpartisan, and we are non-biased. We do not endorse any candidate publicly at all. Our position, stand, we would like to educate, get more parents involved, get more community members involved in the voting process. That is our position. On May 13th, we are hoping, I said hoping, to have a school board forum at Graham School, and it is on the agenda tonight to be voted on. And our only, I'm gonna just say that it is, we're only doing this for the best interest of our students. That is what we stand for. That is what we are about. And I also want to make it clear that whoever, there is no one that's running for school board election is a part of this planning process. There's no one at all. And the same time, they find out about everything is the same time everyone else finds about, finds out about what's happening. So I just wanted to make this clear. Michelle, did you want to say anything? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Janine Fertile?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janine Fertile. I'm the vice president of the PTA Council.
Janine, I'm sorry. One moment. Just one moment. Let him, is the clock running? Perfect. Go ahead. You know what? Yeah, set it back. I didn't see it running.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janine Fertile.
Janine, one moment.
No? Again? Okay. I guess I might have known my name by the time this is all over. So everyone knows me already. My name is Janine Fertile. I'm the president of the Mount Vernon PTA, the vice president of the Mount Vernon PTA Council. The PTA represents parents, educators, community leaders, and anyone concerned with the welfare of children and youth. PTA has been advocating for their health, safety, education, protection, and general welfare for over 100 years. Mount Vernon PTA Council is not a standalone organization. We are supported by Westchester East Putnam Region PTA. We're also supported by New York State PTA and National PTA. I was shocked when Mount Vernon PTA Council was told that we would not be able to hold a school board forum. Many of the surrounding communities, PTA, have already started hosting school board candidate forums, and many of them have forums scheduled for the future. PTA Council, reasons PTA Council should host forums is to help inform voters, encourage community engagement, help with transparency, promote dialogue, encourage voter turnout, and help empower parents. In essence, hosting a school board forum will help build a stronger and more informed, more engaged school community, which allow all of us to be key partners in our educational outcome. PTA has guidelines that we are here to ensure that PTA can successfully host a candidate forum and educate voters while maintaining the organization's nonpartisan integrity. Our goal is to successfully host a candidate forum that educate voters while maintaining our organization's nonpartisan integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Crenshaw?
Thank you, baby. Good evening. Cynthia Crenshaw, a lifelong resident of Mount Vernon. It's a real shame the word is circulating through the community and the churches again that the union principal of principals has asked the principals to write a letter to the Commission of Education to try and remove trustee Milton from her seat. Trustee Milton has had over 800 votes, and this is going to be hard to do. Okay? That's what's circling in the community. Okay? After the principal Rebecca Turner was relieved from his duties as principal, an administrative staff went back into the building and asked if female security guard was there in affair between the two. She was embarrassed, hurt, and disrespected. That question was not fair to her, and it was very low. The admin person that went back and asked these questions was accused of several unpleasant situations and was moved from various buildings. This is unethical, and it's not fair. They are trying to remove this principal because they have three friends under him that is a principal, and by removing him, they move up. This practice must stop. Seniority is important, and you should not have to deal with these type of situations. This person had no business going back in their building and asking the security guard did she have an affair with this principal. It's not fair. Another issue that is taking place is that a principal and a custodian had an affair. The custodian was fired, and the principal kept her job and had a two-year investigation. It's not fair again. And FYI, while I was paying my taxes at City Hall, a lady approached me and said, I've seen you at City Hall, but I want you to know that we are putting together a class action lawsuit against this board. Just FYI for the board. Another thing is the students at Rebecca Turner, the Science Region, they have not had a teacher for one year. So are these kids going to be exempt because they can't take the test? They don't have a teacher? And I heard this is going on at Mount Vernon High School as far as the math goes. They don't have a teacher, so how can they take this exam? Are they going to be exempt? When are we going to be introduced to the new superintendent? Is there a letter from Albany, an official letter from Albany stating when our school is closed and why? Are we entitled to that? Again, these practices must stop. They must stop to try to get rid of this principal from Rebecca Turner and to put this action in, to go back and try to put this on this-- in, to go back and try to put this on this principal that there was an affair and it was not, it's not fair. Let's do the right thing. Karma is a B-I-T-C-H, okay? And it will bite you. And sugar honey iced tea starts at the top. So, let's do the right thing. Let's bring this principal back. He did not do anything, he's a black male principal, that the boys looks up to, that he teaches these boys how to tie their ties, how they should walk with ladies. When they, when girls come to the door, open the door for them and they look up to this principal. What you did to that man is not right. You had that man to go back into school and try to put that lie on that man that said it was an affair. She was very disrespectful. And the person that did it, I understand, has had issues in this district and you looked over it like you looked over your friend, the principal, that had an affair with the custodian, fired him, she's still here.
Thank you. Brenda L. Crump?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start out this way.
Mount Vernon, on May 17th, there will be a taxpayer revolt and a campaign to properly educate students. The school district just received $21 million in federal money and millions more from the state, yet they want to raise your taxes. The state comptroller cited the school district for misappropriating millions of our tax dollars. Yes, millions. They are robbing the students of an education and their safety. Before we give them another dime, we must force the school district to open their books and perform audits. Vote no for the school budget and no to more taxes. If we fail to stop this travesty, students and taxpayers will suffer. On May 17th, vote for the school board candidates Lorna Kirwin on 2A, Adrian Saunders 3A, and Mark Lensey 6A. They are running to protect students as well as taxpayers.
So, now I will go into a 3.3% tax increase on this community after we've had the board president trustee Adrian Saunders in 2022. The majority board ruled for a modest 3 of 0.5% tax levy increase. And we had the board president vote in the opposition of that and then started a revolt tax campaign against the school district and her colleagues. As someone asked the question, we want the information as to had we started in 2022 with the modest 0.5%, where would we be right now? Because is 3.3% modest? So, if the president brings a tax revolt against a modest 0.5%, how is it acceptable for 3.3%? And this question go to every trustee that voted in favor of a 3.3%. What was your rationale? What were you looking at with the physical strengths that the district is in, the distress? People can't afford to pay their taxes now because it's not the city that owes, it's the taxpayers or the property owners that owe the money. So, if the people can't pay their taxes now, what do you think about a 3.3% tax increase? So, especially for those incumbents who ran on consecutive 0% tax levy, we want to hear from you, the community. If you thought a modest 0.5% was too much and you launched a tax revolt campaign against the majority rule of the board and had the community vote down that budget, then blame the community because the budget was voted down when you went out and told them to vote it down. Lastly, I'm gonna stop with that because I got 45 seconds and I need to cover something else. And we talk about transparency and integrity in this community. The community is fed up. We've had enough. People go out and vote on Tuesday, May 20th. If you're not happy, then vote for your happiness. Vote out people that are closing your schools. Vote out people who disrespect you. Vote out people who was not thinking about our children for those consecutive years that they were doing 0% tax levy increases. Please update the community in regards to the superintendent. And again, we talk about not trusting this administration and the board members because when you have something on your website that you keep referencing for us to go to and you go to change it, that's a problem. It was April 15th on the website. It said on the superintendent tax, the superintendent outline, it said April 15th. Now to go back, when I mention it, now all of a sudden it disappears from the website. That's not good. That doesn't, that does not build trust. So, now it's not there. You don't replace it with anything. You give no updates. The timeline for to report to the community was Tuesday, April 15th. There was no board meeting because school was closed and you have the following week, the following board meeting, which is the 22nd. And there's still nothing to the community. Now we're in this board meeting and there's still nothing to the community. Unacceptable and, and disingenuous to take it down off the website, to treat us like we're ignorant, we're stupid, we're senile, like we don't know that it was up there. But what you didn't know and what you didn't do or couldn't do, and I got the receipts and I'm gonna put them up because the community needs to be informed, enlightened, educated, and empowered with factual knowledge. I'm gonna put it up because it was on the timeline. The gentleman who ran the search spoke about it here, so it's recorded. So, I'm not making anything up because I come with facts. You're not gonna argue with me because here's the video. You're not gonna argue with me because here's the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you.
Get it together. The community has had enough. We're fed up and we're calling all of you out.
Thank you.
Community, vote on Tuesday, May 20th. Don't call me people. If you don't come out and vote, don't call me with your issues and your problems. I don't want to hear it. Come out and vote. Vote them out.
Thank you. Hope Maribel?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, esteemed panel, and thank you for allowing me to speak before you this evening. I am here again to speak about the acquisition of 101 Summit Avenue, which I think you all know that our hearts at the library board are totally in the right place in regard to the support of this acquisition. E.B. White is a literary icon. His story began in Mount Vernon, New York. His life ended in Brookline, Massachusetts, but in reality, his story has never ended. And this is an opportunity for our community to invest in itself for generations to come. So, what I would like to bring to your attention is that we have changed the date of our presentation to the public to Monday, June the 2nd, 2025. I also want to alert your attention to a couple of other events that are upcoming. We're going to have a trustee, a library trustees forum at the library on May 15th, 2025. June 25th, we, we will be honoring J. Gary Pretlow, Assemblyman J. Gary Pretlow. We are, we have renamed the Grace Baker Community Room in honor of J. Gary Pretlow and that reception will take place on June 25th, 2025. I realize there's a small cluster, you know, of community members that are giving us pushback, but I'm out in the community too, as you know, on an ongoing basis. We actually have a lot of support for the acquisition. We are covering all bases, not just the bond proposal. You know, we're working because we know that this is a great thing for the community. Also, I would like to acknowledge the fact that one of my mentors from high school, Dr. Larry Spruill, was in the room this evening, our city's historian. He had to leave a little bit early, but it was really great to see him, that he graced us with his presence this evening. We are doing great things at the library. It was, it's been a rough rocky road, but we are, we're in good standing. We're at full complement with our finance department. Our books are fully reconciled. We've completed our audit. Our annual report was submitted timely. We've cured all of the other annual reports that had been pending. We are fully registered. There's a lot of rumors out there, but we are doing great and I want to also acknowledge the presence of Councilwoman Caitlin Gleason. If it hadn't been for Councilman Caitlin Gleason and, and Oscar Davis Jr. and Vivian Salmon, the library would have never unearthed the $269,000 that had been unaccounted for for a few years. They did a payroll edit. They had DSJ CPA find the money and the state, and, and we've been, and we've been on a roll ever since. And so, I must acknowledge Councilman Caitlin Gleason and thank you so much for helping us save the Mount Vernon Public Library and we are going to be serving this community for another 130 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
As a point of privilege, I would just like to acknowledge that Hope Maribel is my sister and today is her birthday, so I just want to thank her for being here tonight.
Thank you. Maria Valdovinos?
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Valdovinos. Been a long resident here. I actually attended a school here. Long story short, you were, the acting superintendent was going to meet us from Mount Vernon Leadership Academy and up to this date, nobody has actually reached out to us. There's a lot of rumors going on, where the kids are going, what's going on. Also, what's gonna happen with the middle schoolers? There's a lot of rumors going on. Are they gonna go to this school or that school? They saying STEAM, Mount Vernon High School, now they mentioned they might go to a different school. We don't know as parents. We need to know. This is our kids coming out here to the school, okay? So, as y'all made the decision to close the schools, now it's time to speak up and let us know what's gonna happen with our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question. I'm sorry, ma'am, can you, I'm piggybacking off of you because I want to ask, if, on the district site, on the reorg tab, there is the image of what was presented at the town hall, which is kind of like this map with these pictures and these arrows going all over the place. It looks like a video game. But what I'm trying to understand, is there a way that we can put something simplified on the district site that says exactly what this parent is asking? If your child is here and in this grade, where are they going? If we can have something that's simple right on the district page, right there, sometimes you open to the district page and something pops up on the screen before you can go anywhere and it's like, no one even cared about that. But I think that's something that we should have go up and it should just capture the three buildings that are, that are closing, the ones being impacted, just have something simple. Hey, if your kid goes here now, September, I'm sorry, your child, kids are goats. If your child goes to this school that's being closed, they're going here, September 7th. I'm sorry, September, in this coming year. Which middle school? All of that. Can we have something like that on the site so that, I know the frustration because I didn't even get to ask you about the teachers yet and whether they heard what they, where they're supposed to be going yet either.
The response is yes, that can happen.
Okay, so we can, we, that's the timeline? Can we get, we can get a timeline for that?
We do have a timeline on the website.
No, 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 I mean for how soon we can have that up. But I'm sorry, what's, I'm sorry, ma'am, can I ask your name again?
Maria.
Ms. Maria can, because Ms. Maria can check the website. Why don't you, Ms. Maria, check the website again?
They said, actually, the last town meeting we had, they said the superintendent was gonna go to each school that was closing and she was gonna say, if you're, this is how we're gonna reroute them, but up until today, we haven't heard anything. We, and I know it's, what, we have less than a month probably with all this going on and I know you're gonna be leaving and the new superintendent is gonna be like, well, I didn't do this. And that's how they're gonna wash off their hands.
So, in regards to, will, will you be provided with that information? Yes, you will be provided with the information. We plan on sharing with each parent where their children would go. You heard the second week in June, we're trying to do that by the end of May and tours is also being coordinated so that you'll be able to visit the new school that your child will be attending.
Are you gonna come to the schools and let other parents, not just myself? I just, you have to come out the same way you did other presentations, saying that you're gonna close down the school, the same way. We expect to see you and a lot of parents have questions.
Are you inviting me to come?
You sure then welcome. I bet you all the schools that are closing, they welcome to talk, to come and talk to them.
So, I did, I did have a Zoom meeting with your building. I will come out to your school. I will let your principal give me the best time to do that.
Okay. Can I be in person?
Yes, it can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Antoinette King?
Greetings, board members and parents. My name is Antoinette King. I have been a citizen of Mount Vernon my entire life. I got my start at Cecil H. Park Elementary School. Ms. Lynn Middleton was the first person to greet me as a secretary when my principal was Ms. Mary D. Spells and Mr. Adney was also in the building from when I was in kindergarten. So, it's a pleasure to see them. I'm a former student, as I said, of the Mount Vernon City School District and a former employee. I have come before you this evening to express my disgust, disappointment, and outrage of the treatment of the Rebecca Turner Academy. The alternative program has been shuffled around too many times. They deserve stability and a permanent home, which I thought they had. As a community member, I thought they were given this when they were given the original Columbus Elementary Building that had their name changed to Mandela Zalakoffel, which we know as Dr. Z, who was the principal of the original academy, whose, his famous quote was, "No Buddha, no ripple." He spoke our kids' language. I was sadly mistaken, they would be stripped of their building and rightful name to be shuffled around again. Dr. Z didn't service elementary children, he serviced the children who were discarded and unwanted. They got their name changed two more times, such as Sundown and now Rebecca Turner, and moved two more times between STEAM and Mount Vernon High School. At Rebecca Turner, they had a wonderful principal. When my daughter was now going there for the first time this school year, she didn't know what she was gonna encounter. She had a lot of apprehension, but this man welcomed her in the building and he helped her get acclimated to the building and he had supported her all the way that, all the way through. My daughter's a senior in the building. As a senior and they prepare for prom and graduation, they look for familiar faces to celebrate their accomplishments. To God be the glory, my child is graduating and won't have to suffer this injustice any longer. But what about the children that are not graduating? Sending them back into schools that didn't want them is setting them up for failure. Something different has to be done. If you want children to change, then you guys are gonna have to change how you guys are treating them. You shuffle what you call the alternative children from building to building. How do you expect them to be able to make a change? And let me just be honest, as a former employee, they're really not alternative, it's how you approach them. It's not what you do is how you do it. A lot of them come from so many different backgrounds and all they just want is somebody to hear them out. A lot of them are hungry, a lot of them go through so many things in their home, you have no idea what they're going through. And if you just take a minute to stop thinking about all these different number crunches and just actually meet these kids where they are and do them a proper service, a proper service. service, it's more than just the dollars. It's like, what are you here for if you don't want to do your job properly? And that's all I have to say. I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. And that ends public comments this evening. Superintendent's report?
Good evening, Mount Vernon. I wanted to begin by thanking, um, Mr. Formoso for his budget presentation. He's our Assistant Superintendent for Business and he provided a comprehensive budget, um, report. Please review the website. Additional budget presentations are being planned and scheduled over the next two weeks. Please note that there will be a, a budget presentation this Thursday, May 8th at Pennington School, um, and others will follow as well. I also want to thank the PTA Council for their wonderful, wonderful day, scholarship dance that took place on Friday, April 25th. As Latoya Anderson indicated, they raised significant amount of money and this goes to our, our children. It, um, people came out, um, and they really had a wonderful time. I want to say to the PTA Council in particular, this year, they wanted people to enjoy themselves and it wasn't as much talking and everyone had a really, really great time. So we liked the planning that went into it. So I just wanted to thank them from the bottom of my heart for a, a night that was, and I've been to several of those dances and I believe that this one was the absolute best. So thank you. Anyway, that ends my superintendent report.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so I only have any committee reports this week, but I would like to thank the board for letting me sit and ask questions during the, um, presentation last year from Aramark, last week, two weeks ago, sorry. And I would like to thank Trustee Mitchell for all the support and help this year with the research and backing me. So thank you.
I was in high school last Thursday. I was looking, I didn't see you. I toured, I toured the whole lunchroom. I looked to see what they were serving for lunch. It was different than what we saw in the pictures, but we won't talk about that, but I was looking for you, but I thank you for all your effort that you put into it. You are, so just in case you didn't know, um, Student Trustee DeGrandprey put together the original student survey that went out to all the different schools that about 85 different students replied to. So a big round for, and thank you for your lift on that and thank you for being involved.
We have not met on the audit committee. Well, we heard the budget, um, presentation tonight from, um, Jose, so that will fulfill our committee report.
There's nothing to report on the claims.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
There's nothing to report on the claims committee?
Would you like to say something on that, Dr. Doggett? Because I don't have.
The education committee meeting met on, um, April 28th. We had four agenda items. We briefly discussed the CBT testing updates. Students in grades three through eight took the CBT testing and ELA on April 23rd and April 24th, and the math assessment on May, excuse me, April 30th and May 1st. We've also discussed the individual arts assessment pathway for the 2025, 2026 school year. In this pathway, due to this new arts pathway, um, students will take four regions instead of five and they need to complete three credits and units of study. Right now, this program is offered in all three high schools. Seventy-five students are in the program and we held a parent meeting, um, ran by the creative director, Angela Hall, on Monday, May 5th to inform parents of this actual pathway. We've also discussed the, um, E&amp;L welcome packet, which will be launched for new families in July. And I have to give credit to, um, our typist Naomi Burgess in E&amp;L. She spearheaded this project. It is in draft form and should be finalized. Information on there will go out to new E&amp;L families regarding infant and campus testing information and just pertinent, opening information that parents should know. And we also discussed the greenhouse update, which the greenhouse order has been placed.
When's our next meeting?
It'll probably be the 19th.
I'm not sure.
And it'll have your, yes, and it'll have your favorite topic.
Hello, I just wanted to, uh, mention that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week and I just wanted to applaud our teacher, teachers for all the work that they do with our children. Thank you.
Move on to facilities. First of all, I would like to say that our facility committee, they are really working hard and they're doing a lot of work in-house, which is not costing us as much as we used to pay when we had to hire people to come in to do our work. During the week of April 14th and April 21st, the facility team completed a wide range of in-house maintenance and repair projects across multiple schools. The oil tank removal at Williams continued throughout both weeks. Key work included replacing heating supplies and hot water circulation valves at Mandela and Hamilton, remounting a gym light at Holmes, and repairing plumbing issues at Graham and Additional tasks include installing stage pulley system at Denzel, repairing bathroom fixtures at, um, Trapphegan, adjusting parking lights at Benjamin Turner, and servicing the Mount Vernon High School flagpole and locker room valves. You can't hear me? In the following weeks, 13-door alarms were installed at Graham, emergency lights were fixed at Grimes, a ceiling leak was repaired at Pennington, and electrical and heating line issues were resolved at Mandela and Mount Vernon High School. That's, do you hear that thing? Yes, yes.
Um, I attended Saturday night, the Oldies Book Goody's, which was great, took my mom, had a good time, right? It was nice and long, but it was good. And, um, what I did notice while I was there with a few other people who were there with me, we looked up at the ceiling and the ceiling had at least three big gaps in it that I prayed to God that nothing like happened in DR happened there because it looked like the plaster as big as a gape it was in the ceiling and different parts of the ceiling. I looked back, there was one here, one there, and one that was formulating and whatever else was going on. So my question is, who's responsible? Are you aware of it, Mr. Ramundi or the facility, um, team? Are you aware of it? And it didn't look good and this was not something little, but they were big, right? You could see it, you could look up if you just looking and it just didn't look good. It was scary and it was ugly. So I didn't hear anything mentioned in terms of maintenance, re, the ceiling at the high school. So I just want to know what we're doing with that.
Well, thank you for the information. I don't know if, I, I know we didn't know about it, but hopefully, I'm sure now, uh, Mr. Ramundi will be on, on that. No one must have reported it.
It was big enough to be any report.
I'm sure it has been, but you know, sometimes.
I, I will add this, that, and I've been hearing, I hear a lot, um, also about broken things. I know we just had an issue with something, one of the, I think the oven at Pennington is down, something like that. And I hear about things faster than anybody else. Um, I really think that we have to truly visit, um, the way we're logging the issues that come from our head custodians. We just have to overhaul it. If school dude is not working, then we just need to overhaul, there has to be another way because, um, Aramark came last week and said that they gave back 1.8 million dollars in revenue and I can't understand how we have one piece of broken equipment for, and some over two and three years. I can't understand it. So I have a question and I know, I'm going to ask Mr. Formoso because he's going to be able to help me weed through that a little bit, I'm sure. 1.8 million dollars they gave us back since they've been here and they came in in 2022. We shouldn't have a piece of broken equipment in the district or a broken ceiling for that matter. Because I've been in some of the buildings and the ceilings look terrible, they do. And I mean, long-term. I'm scared it's going to fall apart too. I don't, I don't, I have to, I don't even want to talk about Williams anymore. I don't, because it's not fair to them that I keep mentioning it and nothing happens there. And that's just one of the buildings in the district that is in horrifying condition. And it had, we, we can't sit on this any longer. This is, it's ridiculous now.
That's it, yes.
Family and community engagement?
Uh, yeah, uh, we met, uh, last week and there's some good things happening in the district and family and community engagement. Let's start with that. Um, there's a bunch of events and all the events through the, through the parent, the community center happened at the STEAM Academy. You've got Zumba coming up, AI's influence on K through 12 education, patency, party for moms, uh, and hiding in plain sight, which is about, uh, the teen vaping epidemic. So those are all good things. And the notification for that is also on the, on the website. It's one of those scrolling things on the main page, but those are all at the STEAM Academy. As Dr. Doggett mentioned, testing is underway right now. He was very prescient in, in delaying the computer administrator tests a little bit because stated was rolling them out and there were some glitches there. So right on for doing that, uh, give our kids a fighting chance on that. Third and sixth grade students are achieving high scores, relatively high scores, which is good. One interesting point that Dr. Doggett brought up was the need to try and infuse keyboarding skills into the curriculum in the early grades as the state moves more towards testing online. Um, you don't want that sort of technical piece to interfere with, uh, the content, which is really what they're there to take the test for. So we're going to have to get creative in how we do that without taking away somewhere else because it's a tight curriculum at the early grades, but I thought that was interesting. The, uh, the diagnostic tool for school and district effectiveness survey is out for parents right now. Uh, the survey link went out on the 25th, is that right, of, of April? And constant reminders as well. So please, uh, take that survey, that's important, that, that really guides the district going forward and that, that feedback is very, very helpful. That's it, it was a pretty much a light agenda. I think that covers everything. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Food and wellness? Food services?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So the, the committee didn't meet, but I do have something to share. Uh, I was, can I see just a couple? What I have in my hand, no, it's okay. What I have in my hand is 63 letters from just the children at Grimes School. So I went to Grimes School because I wanted to see, we had this amazing presentation from the food service company, Aramark, and they showed us these amazing pictures with, uh, these, these, all these things. And I said, I want to see them in the school. I went in the school and they were feeding the kids French toast sticks, potato tots, tater tots, and multiple different types of fruit, but nothing consistent between the buildings. And that was lunch after they just had that for breakfast. So there's a, a whole contrast between what they're serving and what we were shown and told on, on the, uh, meeting last week. I sent all the pictures to everyone on the board. Um, the, the, the letters that came from the students are from all different grades. You know, I have something from one student, um, uh, her name is, we'll just call her AM. Uh, she said, "Our school lunch is not my cup of tea at all. The lunch is super nasty and we, the student, call it trash food." That's, uh, that's one student. And another one, in other words, another one named Miss A., "School breakfast is good. We get to enjoy sweet tasty pop tarts, cereal and chocolate muffins. I love when they serve bagels and cream cheese. I dislike their yogurts. They taste bland, it's dry. Because the breakfast is never consistent, I eat breakfast at home." These are coming from students in elementary school. You know, I'm always talking to parent, to the principals, I want to hear from the students all the time because some, some of them are going to be watching to see if they hear their, their, their letter read. And I can't read all of these, but when I tell you that, the majority of these letters are the reason why I've been sitting here talking about going, uh, getting a better food service company, whoever it takes or holding this food service company accountable, this is what I'm talking about. So I went to Grimes, I went to the high school, um, I went to, um, Denzel Washington. I just visited those buildings just to see what they were serving for lunch and it, it really was, I wouldn't eat it myself. I wouldn't, I have a cat at home, I wouldn't feed my cat. I would, I wouldn't do it, I just wouldn't. I'm sorry, I'm being honest with you because that's me, I'm just being honest. But more importantly, I'm going to read this one letter and it's food served, food, food company, food committee related. This was given to me, uh, some time back. "Our food service workers were confused when our CSCA rep called an emergency meeting with the district food service workers last week. Their confusion became hurt, frustration, and betrayal when they found out the union had, was contacted by the HR department with the idea of abolishing their positions, which means they would be terminated come June 30. Aramark would be totally in charge of food service with only their employees. The next day, we found that the trustees had no clue that the union had been contacted by HR. How do you make this decision without the input of trustees is beyond us. Does anyone find it acceptable that we have had at least three Aramark managers currently? There's at least five people in the Aramark office at the high school and they still can't get it right. Does anyone find it concerning that our surrounding school districts has fired Aramark, but no matter how incompetent Aramark proved themselves to be, Mount Vernon City School District still insists on keeping them and possibly renewing their contract? Their ordering is horrible, some weeks you don't get what you need, some weeks you get double of what you need and some weeks you do not get enough of what you need. They are calling other schools for food because they haven't ordered enough for themselves to serve the students at Mount Vernon High School. Other schools are calling each other because they're not getting what they ordered so they can have enough food for their students. Also, why do we have a chef that can only cook, that only cooks for Mount Vernon High School? Past chefs have cooked, uh, it's like past chefs have cooked certain dishes for all schools like pasta and raw meats. Workers have been reported how verbally disrespectful some of the Aramark managers are to them. We are doing an injustice to our students, our staff, and our community by keeping Aramark in our district. So many days, these ladies figure things out on their own and make it happen so the students at their schools can eat. We ask that you, the trustees, go around to these schools and speak to the students' parents and staff. When you meet privately with Aramark, you can only hear and see one side. We also ask that the food service workers are included in these meetings with Aramark along with the trustees so you can hear our concerns." And it just signed MVCSD Food District Workers. Now, I say all of that just to explain why you've been hearing me all of these months and probably more than a year, all right, about what's going on with the food service workers and why I'm fighting so much to make sure. You know, we had someone speak today, I heard, I missed it. Um, I heard we had civil service here to spoke today and I've been sending email after email and to the point that I'm sure, um, Mr. Campbell and Mr. Ramundi are just, just ecstatic when they see my emails come through when I'm asking, hey, did we finally get approval from civil service that the layoffs we're talking about for these workers are being done correctly? Is seniority involved? There's all types of different pieces involved to when you're doing layoffs for civil service workers. And all I'm asking repeatedly is, do we have documentation that says we're doing it right? I'm tired of litigation. I sit on this board as a fiduciary responsibility fixture as well. And if I'm going to sit here and just allow us to do things so that we can just look at litigation later because it's like, well, we'll do it right next time. That's not it. But I'm just saying this because this is a prime example of what I've been talking about. I'm just not going to run my mouth up here about food and all of that. My kid comes home, tells me there's no food, it's facts. This is it. It's right here in writing. I didn't write this because it would have been a lot different, it would have been something different, it would have said something different. Mr. Trustee DeGrandprey has something to add.
I recently heard that with the, um, letting go of the food staff, that they're not going to serve hot lunch anymore. That, that it's going to be bagged field trip lunches now.
I hope not. I hope not.
That's the first time I'm hearing of it. And I will say this. Mr. Ramundi has worked diligently. I'm going to, I can't, I'm not going to drag him. He's worked diligently to get the RFP out for the new food service company. We're moving forward. We're in timely fashion because I've been asking and I've been badgering that we're in timely fashion so that we can get better for the kids, for our students. If you have anything that you can add at this time, I really would appreciate that.
Sure. Good evening. Good evening. So we went through in our food service committee meetings. We took into account all the surveys, all of our own observations. There is a survey on the district site that we published a few weeks ago to gather more feedback. Myself and with the attorneys and with our food service consultants, we went through and we rewrote 137 pages of this RFP, making material changes. And it was, it was a very, very tedious process getting down super granular from portion sizes to meal quality to oversight, to operations, to guaranteed returns to protect the district's financial interests. We submitted that to the state last Friday even afternoon. And the state emailed me back Monday afternoon with full approval of all the material changes to the contract, which is fantastic. And so now we've been also directly soliciting other food service companies. I had a phone call this morning from one, one of the big players who showed interest. And we're publishing our RFP on May 12th in the Journal News. It's on BidNet. And we're also directly soliciting food service vendors across the tri-state area and the country to participate. So I ask anybody who's interested in food service and being a part of Mount Vernon City School District to be on the lookout for that. And if you're interested, please contact my office and we can send that RFP to you directly as of May 12th. And then we'll start the bidding process. And then there's questioning and tours on May 16th. And then the bid opening on May 28th. And our goal is to award a new vendor with all these material changes at the June 3rd board meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. I'm going to end with this. We, we're working into, walking into the next school year. I think that we should really structure a true wellness committee. I did some research and I'd love to have it where that we have some coaches, some teachers, you know, myself as a trustee, of course. Whoever the food service company is, maybe some of their employees can sit in on the meetings. We should really build a true food service committee, a wellness committee like that. That would be cool. And then of course, hopefully we can have those resolutions for our committees. I've asked that we have resolutions put in the board docs so that we can all vote so that people have a paper trail to see who's been on what committee. We heard a lot about committees, this committee, that committee, but who's been on the committees and who should have, who's knowing what's going on? So hopefully we'll see that happen too.
So trustee Mitchell, I, I went to homeschool last week and observed the lunch with the, I think it was kindergarten through third grade and then the next period. They had, it was Friday, so they had pizza. Everybody ate pizza, but it was corn, it was corn. And they had milk, but there's no, no other alternate other than milk. So they should have water because a lot of kids can't drink milk. So there's no other alternate, not even water, not juice?
That's a great question. And some, some, right. So my understanding of what I-
I asked, was it anything else to drink?
Have the student trustee speaking to Mike, please. We didn't hear what she said.
Sorry, I said that some of the schools, I was reading through some of these letters, they don't have juice either.
Some of them only get white milk and no-
I gave their paper out. Juice wasn't on the list because I specifically looked.
Right. So this is-
On the paper that they gave out that night.
And this is one of the things that we've been chasing for so long to get them to do. We should, the kids, the children want options. If I go someplace, I want options so they should get juice. You seeing that? There's a prime example of you seeing boots on the ground, exactly what the, the children are dealing with. I am not eating pizza with corn. I'm not eating pizza with corn. And I'm not washing it down with a glass of milk either. If that's having something wrong, if you don't find anything wrong with that, then you just know not to give me for lunch.
Okay. So thank you, trustee Mitchell. So moving right along to HR.
We haven't had a meeting this month. It's May 15th, I believe. So I'll be-
Okay. Next is IDA. Trustee McDonough?
Sorry, the meeting was scheduled for this Thursday, but I was notified it's going to be canceled because there's not going to be a quorum. So it'll be rescheduled at some point down the road.
They didn't put a date? Do they have to have a meeting every month?
Yeah, I don't know if they have to necessarily every month. If they don't have a quorum, we can't have the meeting. They're going to look to reschedule as soon as we can. I just got notified that Q, the Q West project closed. I got the closing packet, so I have to look through those documents. The good news with that is, remember, we agreed on a million dollar upfront payment to the school district. So I would expect that we'll get that forthwith. You know, if they close, then that's when it should be done. So I'll be following up with them on that.
Closed, so we didn't get it.
Yeah, well, I mean, look, I just got the email literally while we were sitting here. So I think we could give them a second to get a million dollars over. I think, I think, I think it will be happening soon. If not, I certainly will be on them about it.
Tomorrow, okay?
Yeah, well, Jose will be looking for that.
Okay, thank you. Insurance committee have-
One question for trustee McDonough on IDA. Yeah, that's fine. I'm going to ask my question. So trustee McDonough, do you have any idea how important it is, what you've been sharing with us on this IDA regarding these pilots? Do you have any idea? I'm not going to tell you. I'll answer it for you. Extremely important and very, and very helpful. All right? And, and I want you to also understand that I've learned so much about pilots because of what you've been sharing. And I'm not the only person in the community. Somebody's trying to stop me. Trustee Curran told me it's almost nine o'clock, so she's jamming the radio waves. Anyway, I learned so much about pilots that I truly can say, no one in the circle that I've ever been around and I'm in knows more about these pilots as they do now based on what you've been sharing so that we all know just how damaging and destructive that they are. And no one, no one would want to be behind them. So I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The insurance committee has not met. Policy committee is, we have something to discuss with the trustees and exec. We finished the, we finished our policy review that we had at the retreat. Yes, we did. So, so we are going to discuss some of those policies and exec. Aren't you happy, Chris? I know you were, we, we were on the phone. How long?
Three hours.
Okay. So, so next is safety and security.
I don't believe that we had a, have we had a committee meeting since the last one? No. It's one for next week coming up? All right. So nothing for security until we have our meeting next week. Thank you.
Special education?
I think we're going to be meeting this Thursday. I have to, I have to confirm that.
This Thursday?
I think so. But if not, I, we will meet before the next board meeting, but I have no, no report tonight.
And technology?
Yes, thank you. The technology committee met on yesterday. I would like to commend our director of technology, Mr. Ramirez, for his due diligence in ensuring that we are reviewing our installment purchase agreements as well as ensuring that we have adequate equipment for our students to, for instruction and for testing. We purchased about 1,500 laptops during COVID, which was around in 2020. And as you know, the life, the life cycle of a computer over five years is, is pretty much useless. And so at this time, our computers that we currently have and that are installed and we're using for instruction are inadequate for our instructional activities. Therefore, we are looking for an acquisition of instructional laptop devices, replacement plan through BOSI's, through the installment purchase agreement. As you know, there is a 56% reimbursable reimbursement for those laptops. We have, Mr. Ramirez has actually secured or has been working with Apple in order to work out some really great installment plans so that would save us on actually how we acquire them and how we, we actually use our cash flow in terms of paying for those devices. So we are looking to acquire 1,500 laptop devices. We are currently holding off on the installment purchase agreement with BOSI's pending review with legal. There is one item, I believe, that they have come to a resolution. We're just waiting for it to be in writing and it will hopefully be on the agenda for the May 20th meeting. Our next technology meeting will be on May 19th. And if Dr. Doggett or Mr. Ramirez has anything they'd like to add, then I would give them an opportunity. Thank you.
I guess they have nothing to add. All right, that could, that concludes the committee reports. I'm following up on old business. Think you want to address the resolution?
Yeah. Yes, I do want to say that there should be a correction as to the board meeting April 1st for the classified, classified, or was it certified? Sorry. I looked at two, but for the certified tabs where I did abstain to it. And there was a bit of confusion in terms of the tab numbers. But I do want that correction to be made. All right? Thank you. Where I abstained. I just want to make sure you got it.
I do have a question. We did hear from the public regarding our, the status of our superintendent search. And we did promise that the, that there was an anticipated date or announcement of April the 15th. And I do think that our community is entitled to at least an update status in terms of maybe even a date or anticipated date on when we anticipate sharing any information with the public. So I would like for that information to be shared if possible.
So I spoke to legal regarding that because I thought that we needed to give the community an update. And I was advised that we should not at this moment.
Thank you. Also, in addition, when the superintendent provides reports to the board, I'd just like to know if we could have the information or at least the topics that were read into the record, if they could be listed on the resolutions so that we'll know exactly what's going to be reported on by the superintendent, if that's possible.
Are you talking about when individuals present? Because that's usually indicated.
No, when it's listed on the resolution, reports of the superintendent, just topics that are going to be shared with the, the board. If that could be shared-
Oh, okay.
On the resolution in writing. Thank you.
Can I, old business, one, one thing? I know there, there were questions from the community regarding the school closures, looking for some letter from Albany approving it. I, I'm not aware that Albany is in that position to give a letter to approve it. I mean, the school districts, LEAs are locally controlled. Certainly they're involved. They've been involved. But I don't think they, they issue a certificate of approval to close the buildings, at least not that I can find. Because I looked into that when questions arose. So I think maybe we should just let the community know that there will not be, there's no formal letter from Albany. Is that correct or no?
That is correct. When we went Albany, that was President Saunders, Vice President Kelly, Jose, you, Mark and myself, we spoke to them about that very topic and we wanted to have a clear understanding. The, when, when the board made the decision or approved the resolution, it was approved. They are the ones that approve it. The what, what Albany does is they just make sure we have all our ducks in a row. So people are seeking something that's not going to happen. It's already been approved. They want to make sure that we don't violate the laws. We've been back and forth. We've been given everything that, that they need. So that means that when you're voted on or the ones of you that did vote, it's been approved. And that is the final decision unless we do something that's erroneous. Thank you.
I have a follow up question to that because remember we've been telling, the understanding was around that we had to have our documentation into the state by a certain deadline. That's why the board had to vote on it by a certain exact date. What was that, what was that deadline for? Just to have it to the state? Why? I just want to know.
They, they require it by March 1st, that we have the documentation, the request is the application so that they can get that, so they can review that. But the board, they wanted you guys to vote on it and they gave us the specifics and what that should look like. So we submitted that at their request. I don't know if you remember, it was voted on and then we had to have it a certain way. That's their involvement and that's what they did.
Yeah, that's why I just wanted it to be, it needed to be talked about on the public forum because that's the question that's been out there is that, is the state having to approve anything? And I remember the conversation you had, you told us that I think trustee Saunders and VP Kelly went and basically the state said, as long as the board approved it, then that's it. Basically to leave in us to our own devices. That's what they're doing.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to get, I just wanted it to be verbalized so that we can understand the process.
No worries.
So when you say the, the board approved it and you had to submit whatever it was that you submitted, what did you submit that we did not see what was submitted?
Basically, based on your approval, everything that was approved, we had to send that individually. Like you, how many students in each building, how many, what schools? We have six schools, for example, that are, or four schools that's going to be pre-K or K to eight. We had to list those schools individually, the configuration. For the schools that's going to be K to six, we had to list each one of those schools. Any school that was changed or had a reconfiguration, we had to list them. And, and so in addition to that was the numbers that we anticipate in each of the schools. That's, there has been back and forth in, in that regard. You might recall that originally we said, for example, that at Mount Vernon High School, we was going to send the ACE program. They, they questioned that. So that's how that change was made. Because they wanted to make sure that that population would have students similar grades, that they would be integrated with them. So basically, what was placed in resolution, we had to submit that to them. And so they had to make sure that we have the right composition for our special ed population. They wanted to know the, the numbers because when they, when they give new bed codes, they indicate the grades and the levels in each of the schools. So Mount Vernon High School didn't have to be submitted because it wasn't, it wasn't changed. Lincoln didn't necessarily have to be submitted because it's staying as it was. So some of the schools definitely didn't have to be submitted because there's, there's going to be no change for them. In regards to Rebecca Turner Academy, that is considered a new school because it's different than what it was. That is the only school that has to be approved.
Okay, so is it possible that we could get as a board? Because sometimes we say things and what we're going to do, what we should do, and they do change, like water running sometimes. So is there a possi, is there a possibility that we can get a copy or see what you submitted that you're telling me right now?
So submissions have changed. When they make the requests, they have changed. Mr. Ramundi submitted, submitted most of those. He could share that with the board.
And I'm only asking because what you heard tonight with the question in reference to a letter or something being sent from the state as trustee McDonough was saying too, is there, was there actually something in writing? So I'm asking because I know as a board, what you submitted by March 1st, and I think it was even after March 1st, if I'm correct.
No, it was before.
Was March 1st before? Okay.
The original was submitted before March 1st, but the follow-up questions from the state came thereafter.
Okay, so if we could, you know, as a board, if we could see that, I think it would be great for us to see what you submitted.
I'll, I'll reach out to the state and see because the, how the forms work, once they're submitted, the state pulls them out of my portal so they'd have to re-release them. So again, on those forms are enrollment numbers current, projected enrollment numbers, transitions on where students are going, making sure we're, we can provide academic continuity of services for regular instruction, support services, how we're going to support our teaching staff. So every form is slightly different. Again, I can reach out to the state and say, can you release some, the, the forms so I can share them with the board? Because once they're submitted, they're out of our portal, the state reviews it. once they're submitted, they're out of our portal, the state reviews it, and if everything checks out, I mean, the state's very supportive. They want to make sure that we don't violate any educational laws, and they help with oversight. But once they accept it, they usually don't send it back. So I can reach out to them and get a response for you guys.
Can I ask one thing? That would say that the entire, that would say the entire form and everything about it was done online only? There was no guideline, there was no documentation? You have no paper trail from Dr. Kim Smith? How you, how we were supposed to answer those questions, to present that material? There's nothing, there's no paper trail? Just that? Either you got a good memory, or somebody ran a lot of internet time doing that?
All the forms are online, and so what I do, I pulled from beds, reports, and I mean, we can discuss it a little more, and exactly if you like, but yeah, it's an online submission platform for them.
A lot of it is sort of bureaucratic stuff, ticking boxes. Yeah. The meat of the information was what we discussed a lot, I mean, before that March 1st deadline, which schools will be closed, why, when, who will go where, things like that.
Yes. So, the schools that was closing was submitted to them, and they see that it's closed. But it is a portal on the website that you indicate those things. Is that it for old business?
No, I have, I have a couple. So last week was very busy. I'm going to be lighting it fast, because I know it's nine o'clock, but I got to share some stuff. So Autism Accepters event was at Benjamin Turner last week. I went, it was incredible turnout. They had bouncy houses and different sororities were there. Very, a very good turnout, lots of children, lots of parents. It was a beautiful day. I was glad to be there, glad to be invited. Thanks to Principal DePa and Sister Principal Turner, and their PTA and the folks who at SEPTA, who helped, who were there. The SEPTA folks there, Dr. Lopez was there, there were other people there. It was good to just see everybody, to, just to come out for something so good. The, there was a Tamara Hall event, she's an author, she, at the library this past Saturday, myself and Trustee Saunders, Trustee Kernwin, Trustee Middleton, Trustee Maribel, Trustee Nijenga, we were all there for it. Incredible turnout, a bunch of children came in. She sat, she read to the kids, and, I'm sorry, the children, the babies, and then she had a book signing. So you got to take a picture with Tamara Hall and get your book signed, and it was very cool, very nice. The Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, I said that right, Trustee Maribel, I hope. They had-
Got that right.
Right now. They had a scholarship event this past Saturday at Greenberg Library, where there were at least two Mount Vernon City School District students who received scholarships. It's something to look into, for sure. And again, like, the school lunch visits were something that happened. That was just because, I'm going to keep doing that. But again, this is really just the best version of follow-up that I could give on old business right now. All right, that's all I got.
Thank you, Trustee Mitchell. I also went to the autism awareness thing. It was really nice. Yeah, I think I might have left before you got there. So today, they had- Dr. Doggett and I was also present there. With a lot of people. And I wanted to say that we did receive a thank you from the SEPTA. They was very happy in terms of our involvement and support, you know, just getting the information out there.
Oh, the gala was amazing. Sorry, I'm piggybacking. The gala dinner was amazing. I showed up. I didn't have a sweat suit on. All right, it was amazing.
So today, at Mount Vernon High School, there was a student entrepreneurial seminar, festival. So we had a lot of our students demonstrating what they want to do with themselves once-day businesses. So we had some jewelry making, we had some students that would do dog walking, babysitting, you know, feed your cat. We had some students that are going, one student in particular is going to work at Scarsdale Ford. He's one of our students at Automotive. We had some students that do lockers. They could transform your locker. I don't know if that was something we need, but whatever. But they had a lot of students. And also, College of West Chester sponsored it, and they would, they're looking to do some business with Mount Vernon. But that is, that's something we could discuss later. And that's all I have.
So I have one other thing. All Island Association had their luncheon this past Sunday, and four students from the Mount Vernon School District were presented with awards, scholarships. So that was very good.
I think it was just, yeah, it was four.
Four.
It was really, really nice of them. Very nice of them. And our Mike was there taking photos. He's everywhere. Shout out to Mike. Mike said he didn't get anything to eat either. So, just letting you know. Okay, so are we ready?
Okay, we're going to move on to our resolutions. Have a motion, please, for 5.1, Human Resources 125A.
So moved.
Certified.
She's ready to get out of here.
Oh. Wait. Wait, guys, one moment. Oh, gosh. Yeah. Okay, it's fine. So, who, that motion was-
Trustee Maribel.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
My question is, superintendent or Mr. Campbell? Okay. So my question is, if I'm correct, in the last meeting, I heard about the layoffs. Back at March, maybe 17th, I did ask, listening to the different groups or departments in the district where the layoffs are concerned, my question was then and is now, because I haven't heard it, have you considered at the top? I've not seen anybody mentioned from the top, from administration, exemptions, consultants, perdeems, and provisionals. So has that been taken into consideration?
That question was raised, and I sent an email. I don't know if I just sent it to you, Trustee Mitchell, but the layoffs from the top started before this year. If you might recall, we abolished several positions from the top, including in the cabinet, including directors. So there have been layoffs. I will reissue that, oh, yeah. Do you remember that?
Yeah, I do remember it. Those abolishments that happened last year, especially, because I remember we all got up and had to walk out on executive session, because the abolishments were tucked into. I think what, I think, I've been in conversations like Trustee Middleton, I've heard the same type of conversations, and the question has always been, we got directors for directors and assistants, superintendents for assistants, assistants for the assistants. And it seems, and it feels like you got one job, but three people doing it, but everybody's making a lot of money. And that's what the stigma, that's not even a stigma, that's what the optics are. So in the emails that I've sent, and I've said to you, even when it comes down, and I still haven't seen anything about evaluations and observations regarding tenure that's coming up next month. But that question is, why are we, why, we're still top-heavy? Even when Mr. Formosa gave the budget explanation, he said we're still up in here, up at 9% if I'm not mistaken, on administration budget, which is still higher than for the average. And I don't want to look at other districts, I don't care. All I care about is Mount Vernon District. I keep hearing this nonsense, oh, this is going on the state, no, I don't care. But I want to talk about where I'm at, where I'm a board trustee. That's all I care about. I don't care about New Rochelle, White Plains. But right here, what are we doing at the top level? We could have, this letter that I got from the school service workers, you're not legally saving more than $300,000. These ladies just waiting to retire, for the most part. We could have took two or three people that are sitting in positions, we should have looked better, we have to do this right. You know, it has to come from, we have to do it, set the example. We had superintendents that sat here, took pay increase freezes, I remember if I'm not mistaken. We have to put the, we have to do this right. So I agree with Trustee Middleton in the same question. And to talk about abolishing positions last year, which were part of an old regime for the last, for the actual superintendent, that doesn't necessarily say we were making those cuts to be budget effective. That just says, you know what, you were part of this team, so I ain't going, I don't want you here no more. That's really what it comes down to, and that's exactly how it looks, unfortunately. If you had have said, maybe if it had have been now, and you had have brought those abolishments to the table now, in the face of this, now, not, because fiscal stress has been on the table since 2019, but we're not going to talk about that. But when we, if you would have put abolishments for those type of positions now, it would have made more, it would have said, okay, yeah, nah, you actually, yeah.
Now we're still in my voice.
Yeah. But now, it's like, to sit here and mention, and you did mention, I appreciate you emailing me back, but those abolishments was because they were just part of a different regime. Because we got rid of people that we still needed to do certain things. We was just talking about grant writing recently. We don't, I don't know what the number was. Budget Committee knows how much grant money we got in the last school year. Have we reported on that by chance? Have we had, what was the last conversation? I think we only pulled in about $40,000 in grants this year, since we abolished the grant writing, the person who was doing that?
Well, well, you do remember that we do have an organization that writes our grants.
Right. I remember, we hired them.
Right. So there is a grant writer right now that's on the payroll, right? So I don't remember the exact amount that came in for grants. I know a couple months ago, though, it was, I think, a total of $30,000 or $40,000, which was nothing.
Yeah, that's-
For school size. But I don't, I can't speak on clarity on that.
Yeah.
Because I don't know the number.
Right.
So we have to ask Jose.
Yes. Okay, I appreciate that. I'll send, I'll send something, just so we see a comparison of what we used to get in grants. But that's what that question, I think, comes from Trustee Middleton. I'm sorry to steal your light.
And then you have APs too, when you have low enrollment. So you're going to have a school with 250 kids and an AP and a principal? I mean, how are we, you know, juggling with that? So that's really to my point.
I would just like to also comment that during the budget presentation last board meeting, I did ask Mr. Formosa whether or not there had been any identification of a reorganization, so to speak, in order to identify what positions may need to be abolished or reorganized. And the comment or the response was that we are waiting for new administration in order to take a review of the budget that's been presented at this point. And perhaps there can be some other, maybe other items that can be reviewed. So I would say, let's just wait.
Can I also just make a comment on that? I think it is an ongoing process. I know, for one, I'm learning this. I mean, so I think as we go on this year, it's sad that we're losing Mr. Formosa, but I'm optimistic that we will, we will be able to recruit and retain somebody who's highly skilled. And then we will continue to work on these, what I would call, I think in a recent email, I called it shared sacrifice, the importance of shared sacrificing in positions that are not student-facing. Preserving as much as we can of the staff who work directly with the students is essential. Even small things, you guys know I mentioned about the, I was upset to see that the Board of Ed budget line went up, and I've asked a lot of questions about that. And again, I will put it out there, I called for eliminating the food budget. There's a $7,000 budget for food. After this meeting, we'll go in the back room, and there's a hot dishes out there. I understand that it's a volunteer position, and we often leave from work, but I said, brown bag it. That's a show of support with the community. Eliminate that $7,000. Just get rid of it. That is shared sacrifice. And I don't know that it went through, but I think going forward, we should look closely at that. I will continue to do that.
Okay. All in favor? Oppose?
We had a resolution on it.
That was a resolution?
Oh, my God. How long ago? It was like 20 minutes ago. Okay, let's focus, focus, okay.
We're on this, we're-
Okay, all in favor?
We're on the certified resolution. So all in favor? Any oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Have a motion for 5.2, Human Resources 125B, classified. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
I have a-
Oh, sorry.
Comment. We did hear a presentation from our civil service department, Ms. Rosamunda. And I just want to make sure that we are adhering to that, and just, we kept a press as to what the status is.
All in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion. Can I have a motion for 5.3, requests for leave of absence?
Can we have the, the screen?
Yeah, the, everything just, yeah. And this just went down again. So, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor? Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.1, Approval of Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 19, dated May 6, 2025.
So moved.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor? Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.2, Authorization to Hire the 2025 Extended School Year ESY Administrators. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion for 7.1, Authorization to Accept Educational Data Services, Inc. Bids? Questions, concerns, discussions?
Questions? These are all the bids that were received? Okay.
All in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.2, Authorization to Amend Resolution 10.2 from the April 1st, 2024 meeting to include education center oil tank abandonment. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. So, yeah, why are we amending this resolution again? I mean, I'm reading this.
The original resolution didn't include the Board of Ed. This one will include the Board of Ed on the abandonment of the tank, so that we can file with the state and get reimbursed, and utilize our capital fund, so it stays out of our general fund.
Is there any reason why it wasn't on the original? Because we knew the oil tank was there, right? It didn't like pop up?
Because it wasn't an issue. The other, the Department of Health didn't cite it as an issue. But since we've moved away from oil, we felt it was in the best interest of health and safety to address the tank before it starts to leak and becomes an environmental hazard. So that's why it wasn't part of the initial scope from, I think, three years ago, when, or 2021, '22, when the initial assessment was done.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.1, Authorization to Approve the Mount Vernon PTA to Use the Graham School for a School Board Forum.
So moved.
Questions, concerns, any dis-
Do we have to do this for any other buildings, and are we planning on doing these type of forums at any other school buildings before the election?
I was by, advised by Legal that we had to do this, because it was political and election, and it came under section, one second. It came under 3,000 on the community relations. And if you go to number E- And if you go to number E, it states, "Political meetings or rallies unless specifically authorized by the Board of Education."
I think his question was whether or not we were planning on any additional.
I don't know of any additional forum.
Would that be from the, something that would be suggested by the PTA Council? If they were to make that request, would that come from them?
If they make the request, you would have, for political reasons, you would have to approve it.
Right, but there's no more meetings between now and the election, right?
Not as far as I know.
Okay.
All in favor? Any oppose?
Oppose.
Abstain. Oppose or abstain? Okay. All in favor? Oppose, abstain? Okay, motion carries.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Okay, so we have Trustee Saunders and Trustee Kerwin has to abstain because it is a conflict of interest. And then we have five yes, Trustee White, Trustee Middleton, Trustee Mitchell, Trustee Maribel, and Trustee McDonough, with five yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.1, To Enter Into Executive Session For the Purpose of Discussing Pending Litigation, The Financial History of a Particular Personal Corporation, Or Matters Leading to the Appointment, Employment, Demotion, Discipline, Suspension, Dismissal, Or Removal of a Particular Personal Corporation, And to Receive Legal Advice on a Pending Matter. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? All right. Any oppose?
Will we be returning?
Motion carries.
We will not be returning tonight?